Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. Like to call to order the Hudson Bill City Commission May 10th, 2022. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is that of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for the roll call, I'll have a moment of silence. I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but my moment of silence is going to be contemplating the nicer weather for a change. City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bullheist?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Lorar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. First item of business is public comments. We have somebody on the agenda here, Greg King from Lakeshore Advantage will be here to present to us. And by the way, typically we've seen Jennifer Owens here for several years. We know her well and pass along our appreciation and to onto her. She's done a lot for the community over the years.
Happy to do so. And I can definitely agree, someone who works with her very closely. So, uh, so my name's Greg King and the Senior Business Solutions Manager with Lakeshore Advantage. Last time I was at the city council, we're working with West Michigan Beef on their IDD for their project. And I can tell you it's moving along very nicely and I think we're gonna, that construction's already started. I'm kind of see if you've been out there and hopefully you'll see me here in the next month or so, I know more news about that particular project. But tonight I'm here to talk about our Business Intelligence Report. So, our Business Intelligence Report. So again, Lake Shore Advantage Economic Development Organization, we cover Allagin, Ottawa Counties, been doing this about 18 years. I've been doing it for four. And so this report is a collection of 120 business interviews we do with C Street leaders and it's primary employers. Primary employers for us are any company that designs a good or service that is primarily utilized outside of our region. And so we have about 780 of those employers in the two counties and we try to get up to 300 of them just on regular visits. And then we try to do 120 Business Intelligence surveys. So, let's move to that report here today. So if you go to the next slide, so Lakeshore Advantage, um, we, our goal is to ensure current and future generations want to live and work in a vibrant economy. That's our, that's our goal and we do that all over our region. And looking at, you know, some of the things that we see, I can happy report that, you know, coming out of the pandemic, out of 2020, again, this is looking at 2021, we saw a lot of good things. About 95% of companies reported a stable increase in sales, which is not something that we expected to see coming out of the pandemic. We're seeing a lot of that being driven by mergers and acquisitions. So Herman Miller and Knoll, that was a big acquisition last year. For you guys here locally, Hut Trucking was acquired by RLS Statistics. So, we have a Business Intelligence interview set up with them this year to learn more about that. So that's, we're seeing driving a lot of this growth. In addition to companies who are increasing their product developments, I think the pandemic really pushed people to look at different aspects of the business and what they can offer. So about 87% of companies, or 83% of companies reported increasing their stable sales as well. Again, not something we were expecting to see. We thought it'd be, you know, closer to 50% and a lot more. Companies having some struggles coming out of that and they just hit it strong out of the running. I think even from January onwards, it was remarkable and exciting to see some of these companies and the responses and what they saw as natural growth. I think we're seeing a lot of new product mixes. So, the one I think I like to come to mind is Hudsonville Ice Cream. They're now have now eight production, uh, eight production lines out of their facility in Holland. They're now manufacturing all the little items, ice cream items that are at Walmart. So they private label for all of those. Another fun one is Tommy Car Wash Systems. They just got approved for their project in Holland. So, quality car wash, Tommy Car Wash, all those, they've been manufacturing those. Their goal is to get to 500 by 2025 in the nation and do a lot of software so that they're building new headquarters in Holland and that they'll be the control of the soap levels and water levels from Holland for any location in the United States. So, which will allow them, you know, if they have, say, five locations in Grand Rapids, they need one or two maintenance techs in the area for any, you know, needs that they can supply. So, not something I expected. I started working with them and found that they're really transitioning to a software company. Something else we're seeing too is our automation companies, JR Automation, Mission Design Automation, going into the agricultural world, really dealing with some of our farmers and greenhouse operations, whether it's automated LED lights, whether it's different ways of tracking plant growth. So you're seeing that, again, this merging, I think Hudsonville is a great, you know, example of this, industrial and agriculture is seeing a lot of this partnership. It's, it's again, a, a, a perspective that I'm glad to have seen. Yeah, it's bottom there. And then one of the things, things we talked about, so we talk about primary employers, manufacturing, why is manufacturing so important? So in our region, in Ottawa, Allagin Counties, manufacturing makes up 44% of our gross regional products. For the United States, it's 10%. So we're very attuned to manufacturing. We're tied to it, you could say. And one of the reasons we want to say that, you know, average, one of the reasons we work with manufacturers is their earnings are a lot higher than the average worker. So, you know, we look at the data, um, so for an average manufacturing worker, their earnings is about $79.4,000 or just under $80,000 for their income. When you look at just kind of everyone else across the board, it's around $61,000. There was a substantial difference there. And then with the pandemic and all the kind of the job, lots of jobs over the last couple of years, manufacturing has stayed consistent and has even had incremental growth here over the last while. I think we can attest to that by the plethora of hiring signs we see all over town. Some of the other things we saw in their survey, again, not everything is positive and glamorous. We saw a lot of challenges and I think in some of these things you guys are very attuned to. One of the big challenges was raw materials. It's, it's often this year, but last year was really acute. It was steel, it was aluminum, it was electrical components. It was challenges with all of international sourcing coming through the port of Los Angeles. And while that has minimized a little bit, that's still a cause for concern. We know that there is a, the port of Los Angeles.
The union contract is up this summer and so depending on how that goes, there could be even more ramifications for companies. So we're keeping a close eye on that. Another thing we, you know, realized in this work was, in these surveys, is that about 40% of our companies, those primary employers, are automotive. And I think as we see with electric vehicles, that, you know, the announcements that around 50% of all of the automotive companies are going to be electric by 2030. What does that mean for our automotive companies? We have a lot of companies that are involved with the internal combustion engine that has about 200 and something parts. An electric engine has seven, you know, so what does that mean? So we're looking at some assessments and some work to kind of determine how we can help some of these companies transition if they want to. We know that, you know, these internal combustion engines, there's a long horizon. It's not just 2030, you know, stop, but how can we help them move on from that? So that was kind of a threat that we're seeing on the horizon. And then labor, that's been a challenge. I hinted at that earlier. Welders, skilled labor, funny enough, that's something I realized, HR managers. There are a lot of changeover in HR managers at companies this last little while. I don't know about municipalities, we don't survey municipalities, but it is primary employers. So we're seeing a lot of that, that change, but I think we're seeing some positive indicators there. We have a new GRCC campus in Holland that was just announced, so that can fit up to 12, actually 1,500 students. So, they're gonna, they're hoping for full enrollments here in the fall. We have, the Carolina Tech Center is bursting at the seams. I just was there the other day and they have to turn away 400 students every year because they don't have enough room. They have wait lists for all their programs. So, what we've seen is I think there are going to be three high schools, Coopersville, West Ottawa, and the other one in Skatesy, they're actually going to be taking in manufacturing programs on the premises. So, again, to help with Carolina Tech Center and the work there. And again, as someone who was just Allagin County for a while, I do have to give a shout out to the Allagin Tech Center. They're doing a lot of work down there as well. So there are some positive solutions that we're seeing here. And then kind of looking at growth, you know, expansion plans, lots of activity. We had 21 projects last year, which was probably, you know, 15 more than we expected again coming out of the pandemic. A lot of the projects, you can see on your screens there, you know, 12 new jobs, about 40,000, 50,000 square feet. As we're getting into 2022, we're seeing a lot of smaller, you know, 10,000 square feet expansions, sometimes to maximize my, you know, company's footprints, add a couple of new machines, maybe some storage and a handful of jobs. I don't think, and I say this, the days of large projects, you know, where someone is coming in 150,000 square feet, you know, something like that, coming in are pretty rare. Now I say that because we just had LG Energy Solution and that big news in, in Holland. So $1.7 billion project, 1,200 new jobs, million square feet. And that facility will be up and running by 2024. So I say that with an asterisk, that that did happen at the same time. So that's a, a large project. Yes, there are going to be many challenges associated with that project, but we're excited to have it. Again, going back to what I mentioned about automotive, it's awesome to have one of the largest, world's largest electric vehicle automakers, you know, here in our community and what that means for some of our other businesses. We do have a small but fast-growing electric vehicle sector. We have Volt Power Systems, which works with municipal, municipalities for their fire trucks and police cars. If they're idling, they have electric solutions for that. We have Jolt and their energy storage capabilities as a startup. So we're seeing a lot of activity in that particular realm. And I think, you know, we already have, as of Wednesday night, we have 13 projects already for this year and it's May. So we have, we're seeing a lot of expansion activities. Again, hopefully I'll have one, maybe two for you guys this year coming up. But that's a kind of a quick synopsis of what we're seeing in our region. Lots of exciting things. And the last thing I want to talk about really quick is really working on this Industry 4.0 initiative. It's not talked about so much. Uh, there it is, I guess, right there. Perfect. It's mentioned there, Industry 4.0, next, you know, industrial revolution. It's really embracing digital and virtual technologies, so robotics, automation, Internet of Things, ERP systems, CAD systems, simulation, all these different things. And so this is, the state's made it a goal that by 2025, half of all manufacturing companies in the state of Michigan are adopting Industry 4.0, are ready to adopt Industry 4.0. So, uh, as a part of this is, you know, the labor shortage, you know, we have to automate, we have to find some solutions that we can do more with less folks. It's just something that we're going to have to do. And so, Lakeshore Advantage, we received a grant back last year to start getting an idea of where our companies are at. So I'm talking, I'm saying automation, how many of our companies want automation, are ready for automation? How many companies need ERP systems? Do they know what ERP systems are? Just getting to that point. And so we did 200 and something surveys, so we got some good data out of it. I think the initial results we're seeing is that companies really need to implement some new solutions. When I say ERP systems, it's Enterprise Resource Planning Systems. I get, sometimes get used to talking in my jargon, that really just kind of controls every aspect of the plant. So if one part moves here and it's associated with sales here, just so that everything's associated. We have, we have a fair number of old-school manufacturers in our areas and I think that's something that we're seeing as a solution. Other finding was that companies really want to maximize their existing space. They want to be as efficient and lean as possible before going to this automation step. So we just had a work group that was facilitated by Dishar with 15 operations managers, plant managers, et cetera, just to kind of come together as a peer group and come up with some findings. And I wasn't a part of that, but Jennifer was and Mandy Cooper, Vice President of Strategic Relations, was and there's some good findings. The next group is with counselors and educators and figuring out how can we bring this Industry 4.0 practices to schools. So, that's the next step. And then I think we have one more third work group, kind of undefined what we're going to do there, but I think it's going to be that blending of education and industry. So that's something we're really behind. We got our, we're putting together a report on this at the end of our grants. But the last part of that is that there are free assessments for companies. They just want to learn about how lean they are and what they do. Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center out of Grand Rapids is offering these free assessments until September. They're normally $2,400, but everything, everybody likes free resources, I find. So, that allows companies to kind of come up with a set of recommendations for where they need to go next. And that's something that we're seeing a lot of interest in. MMTC is booked out through almost July now, just because companies are interested in these resources. So, I think you'll continue to see Industry 4.0, not just talked about by us, but by other entities and other organizations going forward. So, I believe that is the last part of the slide. Any questions for me? Again, I wanted to honor your time, kind of go through it efficiently and quickly as possible.
So yeah, Greg, two things. One, your note on the HR, we stole our HR from the manufacturing sector, so we're part of that process.
Okay. It's you, alright.
And no, she's not going back.
Can you talk a little bit about the merger with Hut? I just became aware of that myself about a week ago, so that was pretty new. But can you talk about how that's going to affect that operation in terms of what they do and how they do it?
I, I don't know yet. So we were, we're trying to schedule a meeting because of the news. We found out probably, I'd say, two months ago. I've been working to schedule a meeting with them, knowing again that they have that local facility, not just in Hudsonville, but what does it mean for their Holland facility as well. So, we're hoping to have it. If we do get it here in Hudsonville, we'll make sure to let you know. And if we can, you know, have you come along for that as well.
Yeah, my understanding, Hut came in and they had big plans to actually move their headquarters to Hudsonville eventually someday and put a lot of investment into the refrigeration end of their operation. And my understanding from the merger is it's now going to be focused more maybe on the transportation?
The transportation side.
Okay.
That's my understanding too of what RLS Trucking does. They don't do a whole lot in the cold storage world. So, whether that stays as a unique capability that this facility has or not, or whether they move in a completely different, a different direction. We do have a lot of cold storage being constructed in the region. We had, you know, AMST, Mulder and Sons Trucking, 145,000 square feet. And in Holland, Classic Transportation built another one too. So we're seeing a lot of cold storage capabilities. So, if they want to stay with it, there's a market for it, but if they don't, I think, you know, their customers can, can work with some of the other local folks.
Thanks. What's the name of the company that's?
RLS Trucking.
Logistics.
Yeah, logistics, yep. So, and I always think it's funny talking about the building. I used to work in that building when it was interstate and I was there when it collapsed. So, it was a very interesting time. So I always, I always have a personal stake just seeing what's happening with that building over the years.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else, questions? Just want to make sure that you understand, oh, we appreciate your efforts in the community and bringing new jobs and businesses, good jobs, high-paying jobs. The flip side is that the infrastructure and the housing issues are a challenge for all of us right now. Finally, I'd like to thank you for making sure the Red Barn did not leave West Michigan Beef and was moved, because I think that's an iconic landmark for our community. So thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Is there anybody else from the public that would choose to speak to the commission? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are four. Minutes from City Commission Work Session dated April 12th. Minutes of the Library Advisory Board ad hoc dated April 19th. Library Advisory Board Meeting dated April 19th. And minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Session dated April 20th. Are there any changes or additions to those consent agenda items? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Our, the minutes and correspondence from the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda items carries. Moving on to new business, public safety, April Public Safety Statistical Reports. Fire Department Acting Chief Steve Essenberg.
Good evening. April, fairly regular month. There were 41 calls for service. The only call that kind of stands out as different was we had one rollover accident up on the interstate due to construction already. And we assisted ZO and Township with cutting that person out of the car. So that was, I believe that was on a Sunday. They had a little excessive speed and rolled over. Other than that, a pretty standard month. 41 calls is about average. We're about average for our year anyway. So, any questions?
Steve, I understand you went to an expo, I think, recently?
Was that what?
You went to an expo?
I was. I was down to Indianapolis, uh, two weeks ago, I believe. That was the Fire Department Instructors Conference and it's more like a showcase. They have training sessions, but they also have all the vendors there with their different products. And I was down there looking at different software for training, kind of looking at that, what we need to have to get to the next level with that. And then kind of looking at everything that's there, that's for sale. It's just a good place to see everybody in one spot. So I spent the day down there walking through the trade show.
It's good you went. It's good you went. You picked up a lot of stuff those shows.
You do. You pick up a lot of knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions for the chief?
Hearing none, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Sergeant Stanga, good evening.
Good evening. We went a pretty normal month as well for April, 186 calls. I would say it's definitely picked up since April. A lot of calls have been coming in. During April, I was able to go to a Victim Services Conference in Lansing. I was somewhat new, assigned to our Victim Services Unit. I'm not sure if anybody knows what they are or what they do, but it's a group of volunteers through the Sheriff's Office that isn't basically an advocate for those that are involved in a traumatic incident involving a death. So a natural death, homicide, a traffic crash. These volunteers go out to the scenes and sit with the families, which is a huge time saver for those investigating, because normally we would be the ones that would have to sit there with those who are affected by the death. Because they come, we can still do our jobs and not have to be involved with that. So, I was able to go to a great conference. Every single county in the state of Michigan was represented there. So all these counties have the same type of teams. So, I am now the coordinator of that.
Jeff, wasn't your mother was involved in that pretty heavily?
My mom was an advocate for 20 some years. So, yeah, my, my family's well aware of what they do, so. The annual report was presented to the county commissioners today for the Sheriff's Office and I would expect it would be emailed tomorrow to probably Patrick, so I would look for that in your box as well. And obviously the biggest concerns right now, we've gotten annihilated with traffic complaints. It's warmed up. We have construction and would have been real busy, so. The speed signs are going to be installed, we're just waiting on Mistake. Bob's team has them all set, ready to go. They reinforce them, have new poles, so we're just waiting on Mistake and we're going to install them on 32nd whenever Mistake is done. So, and that is all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Sergeant? Hearing none, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Dahl, good evening.
Good evening. It was a largely eventful month for us. The one thing that we spent a fair amount of time planning for ended up being canceled, the 5K run. We, it's, it was going to be a new route north of Chicago Drive we hadn't done before, so we, the team invested some time in figuring out how we were going to do that. And then we only had, I think, 21 people sign up for it, not enough to make it worthwhile for them. So, so we're ready for next year though. And I did get an opportunity to train about a dozen people from Ottawa County CERT on traffic directions. And not only because it's helpful for CERT to have that, but I had a vested interest in that too, because now maybe they can help us when we have some of our events. So I'm trying to, trying to broaden the pool of volunteers across the county that can help us out with some of our larger things. Any questions or comments?
I guess the big concern I would have right now is it's warmed up and whether or not we're going in the tornado season, just our sirens are good and you're confident we're...
Sirens are good. They've been tested twice now this year. And, yeah, we do the preventive maintenance on them, you know, just very diligently anyway, so we have a lot of confidence in them. And, yeah, I'm not concerned about those. And we actually met with Ottawa County Skyward and a couple of people from there not too long ago, just to make sure that we're all up on our procedures for if, if there's something coming through the county.
Any questions or discussion for Dave? Hearing none, thank you. Moving on to the Treasurer's Report. Kayla, you're up, General Fund Summary.
Okay, so the General Fund Summary for the month of March just points out that we are at 121% of our budgeted revenues and 74% of our budgeted expenditures. For the month of March, we brought in $79,773,000. It's more than last year at this time, but we did have a big amount of building permits come through. We're averaging about 10,000 to 13,000 a month right now, but we did have a building permit for the Golker Group come in. That one was 33,000. That's the development at South Buttermilk Court. So that threw that number up a little bit for the month. And that brings our year-to-date to $5,117,366. Looking at the expenditure summary for the month of March, we went ahead and expensed a little bit over $190,000. And that brings our year-to-date to $3,341,660,000. Any questions on the General Fund Reports?
We're getting there. 27 is the page.
Keep going, Kayla.
Alright, so the next report we'll review is the Investment Report for the month of March. We did have one CD that expired. That one was from Consumers Credit Union. I renewed it with them for 12 months at .88. And then we had another one with Horizon Bank for .88. So that once, that went ahead and increased our average rate of return a little bit to 1.36 and we brought in $2,872 of interest. Since then, the feds have increased rates another five basis points, so I'm only expecting rates to keep increasing, which is good. That's why I've been doing the short-term investment, so that when they do get up there, we can go ahead and grab those as they inch up. Any questions on the Investment Report?
I had a question early today about, is one of these designated for the money that was set aside for the bathroom on the...
For the library. You were asked about the library.
Oh, the lib, yeah, the library endowment. Is that, is that here?
No, no. So the library had, that's all being housed by the Holland-Zeland Community Foundation and they report on that quarterly.
So we don't see that here.
So that's not included here. No, that, these are just the ones I manage. The library board sees those.
It's on their, on their books.
Yep.
Certainly that's something we could provide, you know, to you upon request.
But it's, but it's in the library minutes, I assume, right? Is it reported in the library minutes?
She puts it in our agenda every time we meet.
Yeah.
It's probably referred to in the minutes, but I doubt it's part of the minutes.
It'd be nice to actually see that number, what it is.
Yeah, it's 50,000 right now. Well, it's really...
I think Melissa could do that and just attach it to the minutes when she doesn't.
Yeah, we can do that.
I think it'd be healthy that if that was there, that way we know that asset is there. That's not a big deal, is it? Not at all. Any questions for Kayla on the Treasurer's Report? Thank you, Kayla. Then we'll move on to payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $161,129.25 and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
I'll support that motion.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussion on the payment of the bills?
We should be about done with salt expenditures, right?
Yes. Yeah, that, Bob, do you know what the timing on the salt invoice is coming in or are you...
They're all free.
Okay. So this will be reflecting the last of them. Were we over or under on salt this year?
We, we start to tire a lot of them out, which is great. We normally struggle to get 80% of our aluminum purchases are required, you know, are required to 80% of the year. We took a huge amount.
Too much ice. It's been moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
And Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Pay the bills. Thank you. Moving on to item 10, ACH Funds Distribution. Is there a motion?
We should pause a minute.
We missed two.
We missed two.
Dave and I didn't get a chance to participate in that vote.
Commissioner DeVry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Moving on to ACH Funds Distribution.
I'll make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by Automated Clearinghouse in the amount of $97,226.40, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
I'll support that motion.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on ACH Funds Distribution? Clerk, roll call, please. All six, seven.
Commissioner Bullheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVry?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. ACH Fund Distribution's been approved. Thank you. Moving on to Administration, the renewed lease agreement for Bosco's Pub LLC. There was an extensive memo. I did spend some time with Patrick today talking about this. Patrick, do you want to talk about it before we call for motion or not?
Sure, yeah. Just a summary, and I tried not to, you know, put the entire contents of the lease in my memo. But the highlights went down from a five-year to a three-year. Just makes it a little more manageable in terms of dealing with tenant landlord relations. We took out the auto renewal clause because we didn't feel that was appropriate. We should always have an opportunity to sit down and review things before we sign. It includes a 3% fixed annual increase to the base rent. So the 2022 rent, base rent will be $25,076, or $1646 for the main restaurant space. They also pay an additional $2 a square foot for the use of the basement. They pay their own taxes, and they split the trash, the refuse on site with the city.
There's no triple net?
There's no triple net, but for all practical purposes, they're paying the majority of what a triple net would be in the lease. When Sonder was there, we worked with them on discussing their need for designating a handful of parking spots, because in the event that there's an event where everyone, every space is taken up, it did affect their business negatively. So we negotiated with Sonder to allow them to put in basically six designated spots. Sonder never did it, but Bosco's took advantage of that and said, yes, we'd like to do that. But it wasn't in the lease. So we added that language into the lease. Way it works is they're basically up all the time, with the exception of during the farmer's market. We bag them during the farmer's market, and, which they're not open very often during those hours anyways. There was new language added to emphasize a 5% penalty for late rent and tax payments, where there were a couple instances where he was late on his taxes. So we wanted to hammer that. And then the grease trap, that was originally entirely on Sonder. In reality, both Terra Square and the restaurant contribute to that grease trap. So we changed the language to make it a shared cost. Bob will manage kind of the inspection of that. The grease trap is basically a manhole out in the parking lot where the grease gets separated from the water. So we'll have that inspected once a year. And if it has to get cleaned out, we'll share that cost with Bosco's. So those are the main changes. There's others. I went through it extensively with the attorney and back and forth with Doug, and he has already signed it. So it's ready to be signed.
Very well. Can you render that grease for diesel fuel? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve and authorize the execution of the attached lease agreements between the City of Hudsonville and Bosco's Pub LLC as drafted.
Support. It's been moved and supported. I'm appreciative. We have a profitable business in that space, bringing value to the community in our books. Patrick, so well done to you and the staff. Any other discussion from the commission? Hearing none, roll call, please. All seven.
Commissioner Bullheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVry?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries to renew the lease. Thank you. Last but not least, Department of Public Works Amendment to Sewer Fee Schedule. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize Resolution Number 22-1740, Establishing a New Sanitary Sewer System Rates for Multifamily Residential Connections in 3, 4, and 6-inch meters.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. There's a memo here. Bob, I don't know. It's your moment. You can shine. Tell us about that grease trap.
Good evening, everyone. And again, I apologize for, I struggle to keep this memo to one page, too. But essentially, as aware as everyone might be with our agreement with Ottawa County, we are a wholesale customer of Ottawa County who purchases sewer treatment capacity from the City of Granville. Our charges from Ottawa County to connect to the sewer system are based on what they call a residential equivalency unit, or an REU. In our contract with Ottawa County, there's basically three scenarios by which they calculate REU charges. A single-family home would be one REU, obviously. They have what they call the commercial-industrial category, where there's a baseline REU. Like, for example, just because it's fresh, like Tommy's Car Wash down the road. Tommy's Car Wash is on a 1.5-inch water meter, and I believe the baseline REU for an inch and a half water meter is five. So they figure that Tommy's Car Wash, doing business, is going to basically discharge the equivalent of five residential units into the system. And that's how they, that's how Granville builds capacity, and how Ottawa County sets our fees with them. What we did not have in our Hudsonville fee schedule was a setup for high-density multifamily residential. And that is provided for in our contract with Ottawa County. So this kind of came to our attention. It was actually Jill Freling, my assistant, who saw this, asked me about this. I mean, that was very keen eye on her, ironically, because we'd actually conducted two rate studies since I've been in this position with two separate companies, one nonprofit, one for-profit, and either of them raised this question. But we essentially, we owe Ottawa County more money when we connect a high-density multifamily residential unit than we're collecting with our fees right now. So from those ones I listed, that attached spreadsheet, I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at that. But I kind of outlined in the current schedule in red the instances where we stand to lose, and the fact that we, there is no current multifamily residential fee structure. At the bottom of that, the yellow highlighted areas are the areas where I'm proposing changes. The new multifamily residential fees on the far right basically just take the actual number of residential units, like, you know, in a hypothetical apartment building that had 15 units in it. We would owe Ottawa County $1,800 for each one of those residential units within that apartment building. So we need a fee that allows us to collect that much revenue, basically plus $1,000 per account for administrative services and accounts set up on our side. So the numbers that you have proposed there in yellow, and all the instances where it's highlighted, are the actual number of residential equivalency units, plus $1,000 on the far right. And additionally, in our existing schedule, in the commercial-industrial other category, our larger meters, we weren't collecting quite enough money to cover our REU debt on those bigger ones either. And those are, those are extremely rare, to be honest. In my time here, I don't believe we've connected any three-inch or larger meters to the system. But the high-density multifamily residential is on the very near horizon for us. Sorry, that was the longest I've ever stood here. Any questions?
Bob, is this a model you've seen employed elsewhere?
It is. I checked in with Pat Siskovich. He's kind of our contact with Ottawa County, and he says that the structure is what's logical and sensical to him. And I looked at some other communities. I think I want to say Zeeland and Granville. And these rates are, would actually be on the lower side of what they're collecting. Figured this was a good start. There's, you know, the plus $1,000 is roughly what was employed on the rates that were prior to the changes that I made. So it was basically the debt we're going to owe Ottawa County, plus roughly $1,000 on the other size meters. So on a, on a multifamily, especially high-density multifamily, you know, there's, there is more work that's involved. So if that $1,000 seems right, we'll see how it goes for a little while. But we're still going to be on the low side comparatively with different communities when it comes to these types of hookups.
This will affect the Boscraft Development. He's aware of this, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Phil, you're the unit civil engineer, aren't you?
No, I'm good. It didn't make sense.
Anything from the other commissioners?
Send Jill a thank you card?
Sure. Buy her lunch?
Will.
Very good. Motion's on the floor. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Bullheis?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVry?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Before we adjourn the meeting, just go down the line here. Tobin?
I don't have anything to add tonight.
I'm good as well.
I think the grease trap thing is a golden opportunity for a field trip for those commissioners who missed the field trip with Joe Bush.
You didn't participate in cleaning it out, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. All you got to do is be close. You just got to be close. And that gives Bob an excuse to stay further away.
Something about it was cold and windy that day, wasn't it? What was that excuse?
That's all.
Patrick? Patrick, we get, the banners are going up this week. The over-the-road banner is in, and Bob is in the process of getting it hung. But he's got a lot of things on his plate right now, too. So be patient. And the New Holland Bike Trail?
That is under construction. Yeah, there, I haven't been out there this week, but last I was out there, they're putting the copper dam in and putting the pilings in. So it's all in?
They're still working on it. They brought in another crane from school side now. The plan was to work the same crane across the creek.
You're going to get a lot of traffic on as soon as it's done. Is it, like, blocked off now, or how is it?
It ends in the creek, so that people.
You have anything, Larry?
Yeah?
Nothing. Jack?
I'd like to compliment Tobin on winning the most dressed up for the evening.
And you, the least dressed up.
No, we're tied.
No, no, not even close.
Kayla, why are we here?
Nope.
Andrew?
Nope.
The only announcement I have is Memorial Day is May 30. There will be a service, as is done every year, at Veterans Park at 10 o'clock. We have a very interesting guest speaker. He's the head chaplain for the Army in Fort Leavenworth. He is a local person. He'll be here under orders from the general. So it'll be nice to have him. And I would appreciate anybody that would like to participate and be there that day. And there will be open house afterwards at the mayor's, mayor's home on Elm Drive. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Some moved. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.